It's gonna be fun.
Get out of your cell.
All right. Apologies, everybody, for my lateness. Thank you for all being here. Sorry. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which we serve, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Public audience. No? All right, then. Moving to committee and reports. Grace.
So there hasn't been too much that's happened since our meeting last week, but there are some upcoming events that I would like to make note of. So tomorrow, March 29th, is our high school's chorus concert. Our marking period three ends this Thursday on March 30th. And our spring break officially begins April 10th through the 14th. And I forgot to mention this last meeting, but two weeks ago, our music department took a trip to DC, where they did some sightseeing and they did a clinic with some students at Staples High School in Connecticut and students at Genadoa University, which is in Virginia.
Very nice. Very good. Thank you.
No reports tonight.
Okay. Jen?
Nothing.
Just want to add that the High School Musical will be at the high school all weekend, right?
Middle school.
Middle school. High School Musical Junior by the middle school students will be at the high school, right?
Thank you very much.
No.
That's middle school, right? That's where the auditorium is.
That's my confusion in the first place.
We have an auditorium there now.
Who wants to clarify that one?
Correct. One more time. High School Musical Junior, put on by Henry James Middle School students, will be at the middle school this weekend.
You got it.
Right?
Yes.
Good. All right. Please don't trip me up.
No, you're good. Nothing tonight.
Sue.
Two things. We had a very successful SAT School Day last week and want to thank a number of people, high school administration, teachers, students, for their flexibility in order to make that happen. So that went very well. And also, the board was wondering when our capstone presentations were going to be, so I wanted to share that date with you. They will be held Thursday, May 25th. There will be five different capstone sessions. They start at 7:46 and conclude at 10:27. So if you are interested in attending, please reach out. I can share some finer details and you'd be able to see the incredible work of our students celebrating their capstone.
Can we throw that date in the update for everybody, too, please?
Sure.
Just as a, that'll be like an ongoing reminder for us as we get closer.
All right. That'd be great. Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan.
Couple of things from my day today that the board may be interested in. It's the start of hiring season, so we are in a whole series of recruiting fairs over the last few weeks. Spent this morning up on the UConn campus recruiting the next generation of teachers. We have a team right now at St. Joe's Recruiting Fair. I wish I could be there, but board business takes me here while the team goes. We also attend Central Connecticut. We attend a Mount Halyo College Fair and the Creck Minority Recruiting Fair. So all of that's happening as we ramp up for hiring season, which will really kick into gear right after April vacation. So that was my morning. My afternoon, I got to spend with a couple of my colleagues at the session for new teachers through the TEAM program, the way we support first and second year teachers. One of the modules that they have to go through is about professional ethics and responsibilities, and they bring them through a whole bunch of scenarios. And then myself and Maggie Seidel are part of that presentation to talk a little bit about technology use, social media use, some of the situations that young teachers encounter these days. And I want to thank Jan Sands, our team facilitator, for inviting us to that session, which is always great. And lets our new teachers earn one of the five modules that they have to complete over a two-year cycle. So always a good thing to participate in, and I know that our new teachers and their mentors appreciate it.
Great. Amy? Okay. Mr. Curtis?
Two, let me turn that off. Sorry. Ding ding ding. Two quick things. One of the bills that Lydia had reported and talked about, 5003, which is the educational funding bill, made its way out of the Education Committee, which is a positive. This is a bill that will benefit the funding equations of most school districts. Simsberry would definitely benefit from this. One of the things I would suggest we do is, and they forwarded a template to the Superintendent's Association, write a letter of support from our board about the bill to the governor's office. So I am going to work on drafting that. I'll send it as part of the update, get agreement on signatures, and then we'll move that forward. I think the more districts that advocate for that, obviously, the stronger the voice. And I think it really helps to address some of those areas of challenge that are in our current budget.
Right. And this is the bill that moves the funding up from 2028 to now.
And actually changes the balance of how you get the funding equation. So it takes on...
Two big pieces.
Two big pieces. Yeah. Two big pieces. You got it. Yep. The other piece I wanted to share is part of, you know, the theme of engagement we talked about when we kicked off the school year. Sue and I have been making visits to each of the schools. We're calling it a listening tour, having an opportunity to meet with the leadership teams at the various districts. We have kind of a template that we go by. And we have, you know, we basically have a conversation about what's working well, what you're proud about in your school community, and what are some of the challenges in an effort to really get, I think, better coherence and more thoughtful ideas about how we tangibly change things to improve. So I know we have some people here that were involved in part of that process, and it was, it is really beneficial. I mean, for me to be able to get and hear from the teachers directly is, it's been great and it's been fun as well. So we have one more to go, which we'll do next week. We'll be all set. Sue and I are kind of putting some themes together, and then we're going to meet with our administrative team and share that information.
That's great. Glad to hear you guys are having some good success with that.
Yeah.
Sharon, anything you want to share before you move on?
I know you're going to meet with the administrative, but at some point, can you just share?
Pull those themes together. Absolutely. Yeah.
It would be good to hear.
You got it.
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. And then I just wanted to mention, and Grace, I apologize if I didn't, if you mentioned it and I didn't hear it, the spring concert at the high school, which is also going to be a fundraiser for the Gertrude Banks Scholarship that we approved last week. So that's, tomorrow night. That is tomorrow night at the high school. So if anybody, Izzy Rana wants to attend, that, Gertrude's family will be there as well.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So we are moving on to recommended actions. We're starting with personnel.
Yeah, just one item tonight. As the board knows, this budget season, we did not have very many pre-announced retirements, but they are starting to trickle in, including this one from the high school. Hard for me to believe, as I look at it, that we hired Barbara Barker in our science department 20 years ago. Barbara has been a chemistry teacher primarily for those years, but she also has a passion for the environment, and she's taught our AP Environmental course and our Environmental Sciences course. So a career up in Massachusetts before she came down to Connecticut, so it's been a long career for Barbara and a much deserved retirement. So the motion is there for your consideration.
Can I get that motion?
Sure. Move that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Barbara Barker, effective June 30th, 2023.
I'll second it. But I also want to say that her passion runs far past her science and into her students and into the community, and she really knew how to connect to her kids, and all kids felt very welcome and very, they felt great to be in her classroom, and they all came away with solid information and learning.
Yes. Kids of all levels thrived in her room. She was a phenomenal science teacher, and we were lucky enough, in my family, to have her.
Same.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Have fun.
All right. Yes, enjoy that. Acceptance of a gift from Central School PTO.
It's been so nice to have continuous gifts on our agendas for the board, and here's another one for your consideration. It's from the Central School PTO in the amount of $8,558.43, and they are making this donation to purposefully get some updates in tables and chairs and furniture, other seating in the library media center at Central School. So there's a motion there for your consideration.
Can I get that motion, please?
Move that the proposed gift of $8,558.43 to Central School by the Central School Parent Teacher Organization be approved.
Any discussion?
Well, thank you very much. It's definitely needed and it will be well appreciated.
Yes. We are great benefactors of our PTOs with much appreciation to them all, and that's a wonderful gift from Central School. So with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Preview and approval of the 2024-25 school calendar.
We know how we get ahead of ourselves with our school calendar approvals. So this calendar has been prepared in line with state law, that guidance, the recommendations from the 2009 Calendar Advisory Committee, our union's contractual working days. You may recall that at one point, there was legislation having a regional calendar and that school districts within a certain area were required to have certain vacation days, the same, and whatnot. That requirement has been removed. Yet, we are still, there's two vacations of note, the December break. Usually, we've had a half-day or an early release day on the 23rd. The 23rd of this year, 24th of December of 2024, falls on a Monday. So it didn't really make much sense to have the students and staff come in for a half-day and then have the rest of their week off. So you'll see that notated there. And then the April break also is inclusive of Good Friday. So there is the calendar there for your consideration.
All right. Can I get a motion on the calendar, please?
I'll move to adopt it, 2024-25 school calendar as presented.
And a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Passes. Thank you very much. And cancellation of the April 11th meeting. So that is our week of spring break. We are also meeting the week before that for the public hearing. So we will still be meeting twice that once, just in a different capacity, on April 4th. So I would ask for a motion for us to cancel the meeting on the 11th, please.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
One second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. So now we are into information reports.
All right. Very exciting. We got our team from Tooten Hills here. I'm going to have Sue kind of tee this up in a minute, but we're going to have an opportunity to talk about one of the pieces of our work that I think is most impactful, and that is our professional learning communities. It's really been an important piece of our collaborative practice over time. And we're going to talk about our student-centered PLCs in math, right?
We are.
So you go ahead and introduce the A-team here.
Yes, please. Principal Anjana Belmonte. And we have our three, our kindergarten dynamic trio of Katie Bristol, Sophie Huff, and Jess Burgess. So as Matt had shared, our professional learning communities are so very important. They are very specific times that grade-level teachers can come together, can look at student work, to share their practices, to share their expertise, to determine what do our kids need, as evidenced by lessons and assessment data, and then what do we do about it. So last year, when we were here, you may recall that Anjana and other members of her team discussed the intervention process and how students are recommended for intervention, how that's a very fluid process. And now you're going to get to look at that through the lens of a professional learning community. So this kindergarten team, it was awesome. I had the opportunity to actually see their PLC in action and to hear the celebrations of students who were knocking it out of the park and who no longer needed intervention, students who needed extension and needed to be challenged a little bit more. And they made some decisions about what that would look like and some next instructional steps. So we thought it would be great to have that come alive in a very real way for board members. And with that, I will turn it over to this dynamic team.
Well, good evening, everyone. Nice to see you again. So yeah, we will talk about our student-centered PLCs. And I think what's at the core of everything that we're doing, right, is around equity and access for all of our kids. And we look at it through, how are we reducing that achievement gap? We're thinking about, how are we ensuring that we have all of those tiered interventions and supports in place for students that need it most, from enrichment down to definitely intervention? And most importantly, thinking about, what do our teachers need to be able to build their capacity and give students what they need to grow and thrive and succeed? So at the core of it always is that success, our climate, right, and our learning for our staff members. So as Sue said a year ago, we definitely talked about our student intervention team, which really comes into play where we have students who have been at either the tier-two and/or tier-three level, which are really a minority of students within our schools, and what it would take in order for students to demonstrate that they are in need of intervention. Tonight, we will talk about that tier-one, which is really 80% of our student population, and to just show how all kids are discussed, what we discuss, why we discuss it, and then what we do based on those conversations. So again, this is really a focus on 100% of students, but typically, where 80% of them are doing and meeting goals that they should be. So with our tier-one, this is really what we believe in, right, that high-quality, truly rigorous curriculum for all of our students. We look at it through the academic lens, the social-emotional lens, the behavioral lens. And then really, what we are looking for is, what does that student need in that moment? Where are they? And what can we do for them right away so that those gaps don't get any bigger, that we can identify and address it as soon as possible? So that is at the heart of the work that we do. The student-centered PLC was something that was new for me as the second-year administrator at Tooten Hills when I came in, middle of the year, upon our return from COVID. We really were, because of the world in which we were living in, we weren't really together that often, and we didn't have the ability to be in spaces together and truly discuss the kids the way we had wanted to. And then when we came back last year, we were looking at kids, but there were a lot of challenges that were presented. So we were looking at data, but not to the degree and to the depth that we were doing prior to COVID. And we knew that while we needed to take some breaths, we needed to get back to really going deep and getting down and dirty with all of the data to see where our kids were. So when our team said to me, "Anjana, you need to see what our student-centered PLCs look like. They're amazing. Our teachers love them. It benefits the kids." I was blown away with this from the minute I saw it in the fall, when we were first analyzing our initial data. But essentially, we come together four times a year to get really down and dirty with math data and language arts data, and we do it twice a year for each subject area. And while we meet weekly in PLCs every single week, it's four times a year that we really can get into that micro-level and pull out what we need to take some next instructional steps. And they are fascinating. And I had praised this to Sue at an administrative council meeting, and I said, "Just please come see it. It's powerful work," and I understand now the excitement behind what we do. And it just makes such an impact on our kids. So I'm going to turn this over to the team who lives it, because it's just powerful. Take it away, guys.
So thank you so much for having us. We're very excited to share this with you. So how does it all work? In the past few years, we've really been focusing on learning targets and the data that we need for those specific targets. What we bring to the table at these data meetings is, I mean, it's actually amazing. I think Sue can like tell you that we know our students inside and out.
I'm sorry. Can you talk into the microphone?
Oh, of course. I never used. Get to use a mic. Okay.
You can move the mic. You can get it closer.
Okay. It's like so official here.
You won't hear yourself. It's just for TV.
I get to be on TV, too. So we spend a lot of time really using universal screens, modifying the assessments that we have for our, this was a math data meeting that you came to. We really, really look at the students. We look for trends that we see in the data. We look for celebrations. We have lots to celebrate. We look at students of concern. Before we come to the meeting, we have to be really prepared. So we look individually and collaboratively at our data and at our team's data. We look at student work samples as well as observational data. And we, I feel like I know my students inside and out. I know these young mathematicians and readers so well. So when we come to the meeting, we get to actually talk about action steps and what we're going to do next to meet the needs of all of our students, whether it's giving them enrichment activities and ways to challenge them or small groups to meet those needs for our students of concern. So it's very, very exciting. The people that come, lots of special people come. Our special ed grade-level case manager comes usually. Our beautiful principal comes. All of us come, obviously. And then whatever coach it is, whether it be math or language arts. So Sophie's going to take it on with celebrations, because we always have a lot to celebrate.
Yes, we do. Thank you for that, Jen.
So the first thing we do when we come to the table is we celebrate all the amazing growth and progress that our kids have made since the beginning of the year. Just up there, some of the things that our co-friends, our students are really doing. They're gaining those strategies for solving math equations or math problems. They're increasing their understanding of knowing what fewer is, which was a big one for us in kindergarten here. Their number formation is growing exponentially. And we also have that math intervention for students who might need that targeted intervention. And it's really helpful, because like I said, when we come to the table, we are either able to decide whether we can exit some kids, bring in other kids for other intervention that they may need. And it's also just a really good time to take a look at our data deeper and see what might those next small group steps look like and where do we need to go with our instruction.
Can I ask something? Can you give, please give me some examples, like, what is the data? Like, it's got to be different for, and if you're coming to it, I can wait. I just...
That's a great question.
Graded papers, just observations.
I was going to ask the same. So around trends and gaps.
It's a combination of formalized data based on our end-of-unit assessments for the chapters that we teach, our observational data as we're observing the students at work, their student work, the worksheets that they're doing, or snapshots of, if they're working with concrete materials, as well as any data that we have from small group interventions that we bring. So if we have students who are working on number ID, we'll keep track of whether they're correctly identifying those numbers or correctly forming those numbers as well. So it really is a well-rounded body of information.
We also give universal screens three times a year. Lori Martenson is fabulous, and she's done a lot of research on how to get data on the specific learning targets that we look for. So that's another big piece of data that we use throughout the school year to see how they've grown.
So they take all these data markers, what's most impressive, and they put them on one big spreadsheet, and then they'll color-code them. So if students are hitting the targets that they should developmentally, green, like it's a green, yellow, red. So they can look at a specific skill and just see by color-coding, how are we doing with that skill? And so if you see a lot of students in the yellow or red, then that might make us stop and pause and go, "We've got to go back to how we teach that skill, because something's off. There shouldn't be this many kids not hitting the mark." Where if there are different spots, you know, a couple reds or yellows, that might mean specific individual need that we might want to provide some kind of informal or formal intervention to get those kids where they need to be. So they're not giving themselves enough credit. It is a pretty, you wouldn't think, like kindergarten, really? But there's a lot of different data markers that they are paying attention to and then coming at this kind of visual representation of it. So they were even doing analysis on specific assessment questions. Like, did we use too much words that the kids couldn't access? Do we have to look at how we really get to whether or not kids are hitting this understanding, this number sense? So it was, again, pretty impressive to watch. But it's a huge body of evidence that people would go, "I'm not so sure for kindergarten math," but there's a lot of information they're collecting.
I've got a question around, you know, I'm figuring that we did this coming out of COVID versus this year. And if you were to look at that, the difference in the data between us coming out of COVID and now being completely, you know, I don't have to say we're out of it, but you know, back full year.
So we were able to do some comparison. We had, in the past couple of years, because our instruction was limited and restricted, we couldn't have the students interacting with each other, and we were also tighter on time with certain things. We did kind of pare down our math instruction to real high-priority learning targets and instructional standards. So we had, we focused on certain chapters more than others. Others were very condensed. So we, the instruction wasn't quite the same, but we are seeing that students are really responding. We did notice when the students came in to us at the beginning of this year, rote counting, for example, was an area that we, based on our fall screen, we knew we needed to really target that skill. And so we were able to respond to that instruction. And one of our trends that we noticed and celebrated was that rote counting really has increased due to that instruction. So once we complete our celebrations, the next step is that we look at some trends and then develop some action steps. And I think this is where the magic really happens in our student-centered PLCs, because this is what drives our instruction moving forward, and this is what will enhance learning for all students. So you can see up here some examples. We were noticing that as a whole, our kindergartners have really developed their ability to explain their thinking verbally. So we were able to come up with some action steps of how can we dig in a little bit deeper and challenge those students who are ready for that next steps? And so we decided to implement some journaling in our instruction to sort of deepen their learning and elevate the rigor of our instruction. We discussed how we can fit in some small groups and target some extra number sense instruction in both our supplemental math block as well as our typical, our regular math instruction. And then the data analysis or the item analysis that Sue was explaining, that was a big celebration as well, because it helped us to really hone in on the needs of our students, whether it was our whole class needs or individualized needs. So just to give you a little bit of a clearer picture of what that looks like, we have done some work at, to, in the past couple of years. We had started this pre-COVID and then kind of had to pump the brakes on it a little bit, as Ange had said. But we were finding our assessments as they were written. We were inputting a holistic score for our students. And while that gave us a general picture of how our class was doing, it didn't really tell us a lot about our students as mathematicians. You gave them a score of either secure, developing, or hard. And that, we got a sense of who was meeting standards, but we didn't know what the areas of concern were, how to modify our instruction moving forward from that. So we've really done some in-depth work with Lori Martenson, our math coach, to break down the learning targets for each chapter, look at the math standards, and look at where are we assessing those learning targets and skills? And so we've been using our database, SIMS, to, and we developed our own little section within that to input our data. Once we've input it, the result is a chart that looks like this, that really breaks down each item on our formal assessments and matches it to a learning target that you can see across the top. So we can look across the columns or across the rows for individual students to see who are the students who might benefit from more targeted and formalized intervention? And then if we look down the columns at those learning targets, then we know, how are our students doing with these learning targets? Are there any learning targets that we need to revisit as a whole class? Or if we do have students who need some extra small group practice, we know then exactly what learning targets that we need to address. So it really just provides us with so much clarity around. It takes all of the guesswork out. We know exactly who needs support and exactly what it is that they need.
And this is built into SIMS?
Yes. Yeah. So like one trend, when you look down our notes in that second column, one clear trend was that there were a couple of students who struggled with 12 and 20. So just by looking at that, that jumps right out at you, and we know immediately that's a skill that we need to go back and look at a little bit more and address more clearly. But it really provided us with so much clarity and also creates a lot of efficiency around our conversations so that we can spend more time talking about those action steps.
And again, that's just a sampling of five students in a particular class. But as you can see, overall, the first five students are secure in those learning targets. But the more yellows that you see, again, you might go to question three and say, "Okay, what learning target does that fall under? Do I have one, two, five students in my class that might need that targeted small group work? We look at it, does that student potentially need intervention? But also on the flip side, we can look at that and say, "We have students in intervention that are now overall very secure in what they are doing." And that's where we can make those decisions with the math coach to say, "Does that student need either a weaning of intervention or a removal from the intervention process as well?"
How many did you dismiss? Was it like five or eight that you dismissed from intervention that day?
I think it was four or five, yes.
Yeah. It was, it was just so impressive that you looked at the pre-data and the current data and it's like, "Okay, that gap is closed. Let's go."
And I think another...
There's just so much more fluidity.
As you say, another celebration too is that no new students needed to be entered into intervention because we were able to use our screens and our assessments early on in the year to sort of catch students before they fell. And we were, we were giving them a solid base.
And I think one of the important things, so maybe Jess or Sophie is just talking about those new kindergarten screens that we are doing this year as a district. So, that's something that we've added to our body of evidence. And we are currently developing the spring screening for our kindergarten students led by the coaches in the district. But we really look at that to ensure, are we missing anything? Are we really kind of doubling down on specific teach and specific assessment? So, are we over or are we under assessing kids? But those screens are new and they are proving to be very beneficial to understanding our youngest learners.
Is this assessment being done at all, the elementary schools?
Not currently. This coach in particular with these teachers are really trying some things out and seeing what success that we have. And that's the whole part of PLCs, or when kindergarten teachers come together, then they can share these best practices.
But the screens are done at every school?
The screens are done.
The screens are.
And Sharon, what I would also say is that the student-centered PLCs are happening at all five schools multiple times during the year. So, that is the consistent piece for all Simsbury students. But again, we have that autonomy and individuality to kind of do some different things and our...
So, this kind of data is...
This is specific to Tootin'. Yes. But every school engages in a body of evidence data dig and how they do it just is unique to their teachers, their style, and what works for them.
And this is kindergarten, but this is done every, every grade?
K six, four times a year.
Okay, so the first three, K one and two, don't have any of those assessments like STAR. That would be included in the upper grades, but this is just more observational. But I'm assuming in three through six, there's also observational data along with the STAR stuff.
Yeah, there's multiple bodies of evidence at every grade level. Yep. Whether it's your BASS assessments, whether it's your kindergarten math screenings, it's your STARS. We even have STAR assessment in grade two now, so lots of evidence.
With the student-centered PLCs, you say they happen four times a year. Is there, is that the only time you can either move kids in or out of interventions? Or are you somehow doing that in between those meetings?
It's fluid. All year.
Okay.
Usually, like especially if there's another PLC that we're having that's not one of our data digs, we can always, we always ask our interventionist to pop in just for a little second here or there, our specialist, and just discuss what's going on.
Okay.
So, that's really, that's a theme that's been coming up school to school. We were just at Latimer today and I know you talked about, you know, intervention last year as well, like the fluidity compared to maybe how we did it in the past that was so hardline benchmark, you're either in or you're out, that we can get more skill-specific, focus on the need, move in and out, build a student's confidence. It's really neat to see how that's kind of growing and how teachers talk about it, right? So, it's obviously a very, very valuable way to look at it.
Cuz that works better. And the other thing that I heard that day, it actually was prior to this meeting. It was another coach on the literacy side and a teacher was, "Can you just pop in and give it a second set of eyes, right? Like, was this a bad day? Was, am I not doing something consistently?" So, there are just these opportunities for these checks. It doesn't always have to happen at this time. Like, those conversations are also happening informally. And I think that that's part of the beauty of having these coaches at the ready because they can be accessible to teachers and help develop some next steps.
Just to give an example of how it's really, it can be informal. One of the things that we saw at our last data meeting was that a lot of the student, well, not a lot, a handful of students have trouble with the decade jumps because they have to rote count to 100 by the time they get to the end of kindergarten. So, our math tutors are looking at like their schedules and they found like 15-minute pockets. Like, they'll take these five students here and these five students here during that 15-minute time. So, it's continuously like different students and what specifically they need.
Little boosters.
Yes.
Right? Those little boosters.
Yeah.
So, we're saying...
Students only moved in and out of intervention on these four times? Or this is just a stop to assess, but it, things are going on all, all the time?
All year long.
And this isn't the only tool that's used? Okay.
The, how often do you as kindergarten teachers meet with all kindergarten teachers across the district?
It's a handful of times a year we had our professional development meetings. We have a couple of other times where, you know, a few teachers from the schools will be pulled together to do some curriculum work. But it's, I would say about three to four times a year that we all meet as a district.
This is really impressive. Great. Cool.
Thank you. So, again, it was just something that I was blown away by the power of it, the magnitude, the impact that it has on kids. And then just the discussions that the three teachers have at the table, so times that by six, or I'm sorry, by seven grade levels. Just the conversation, the collaboration, the planning, the brainstorming, and that positive impact. But when I walked out of there at the end of each of these meetings, that's what it's about. Every student is being discussed, is being looked at. Decisions are being made to exit or to enter. We're talking about the data. Is it too much overwhelming, underwhelming? Are we over or under assessing? Do we have it right? And are we meeting the kids where they are and are we moving them where they need to go? So, it's just something that I really look forward to. And the literacy PLCs are very similar to how the math PLCs run. And again, it's, it's for our kids and doing what's best for them. So, a lot of hard work, but a lot of great work comes out of all of this, so very proud.
So, when you do these student-centered ones, are you discussing only one subject or multiple subjects?
Yep, so twice a year, we're math-focused, twice a year, we are literacy-focused.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
The question I had is, if you could look at from the beginning of the year to where we are now, you know, have you, do you have any data around the number of kids that have been and whether or not they've moved out? And is there any data around how long kids remain in?
Yes. Don't have that data here with me this evening, but absolutely, we can track where students are in meeting each of their goals. We can look at when students enter intervention, when they're exited from intervention. All of that is indicated in our systems, in student reports, yes.
So, at the end of the school year, what's the expectation for a student that's in intervention?
At the end of the, well, we're hoping that students meet and master all of their goals. But if they do not, we roll that intervention over to the beginning of next year. But we also look to see and give them a grace period of how are they adjusting and acclimating to the new grade level? Because we also know that the standards are different. So, we touch base about all of those students in intervention in early to mid-September to see where they are. And then we will progress monitor them to see at what point do they continue or can they be exited based on the new standards.
And then are you finding more students in math versus other literacy?
Yes, I would say yes, right now.
And we're not surprised by that, right? Because that's why we're focusing on math and math instruction, so we close those gaps.
And that's where, right, this learning target approach really comes into play to hone in on that specific skill, that's a high-leverage skill, to ensure that kids are meeting it and closing those gaps.
So, the next year, your first grade teachers will have access to their kids' data or whatever? And remind me again, do we have math coaches at all elementary schools?
We do.
That's great.
And I was asking that question because thinking about, you know, kids that may be, say, fifth to sixth and then sixth to seventh and wondering, you know, if they're gonna leave here and then they'll go to middle school. You know, we have the transition in itself.
Yes.
Yeah.
But then are we gonna also have a challenge in that they're still not where they need to be, but they're now going to middle school?
Right. And that's where we come through and Sue, I'm sorry, but we routinely assess where students are and we look to see, are they responding to that intervention, right? And if they're not, then we become more specialized in the intervention that we provide students with. But we are always looking to see if they are growing and responding. And if they're not, they're moving through that tier or right, that pyramid that we show you. But as they go from sixth to seventh grade here, I can certainly attest, having lived in both worlds now, that those transitional conversations are key. And those incoming staff members are fully aware of who is in need of math or literacy intervention. And it's built into their schedule and then they pick up where we have left off. Yep. Yeah. Okay. Great. Well, we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This was really great information.
Which team got the golden train? Congratulations!
Can I also just add one more thing about PLCs? Just because I'm a new teacher and I just wanna say, these student-centered PLCs, I walk out of there every single time feeling like I know exactly what I'm doing with my data. I know exactly what my kids need and I just have an awesome team that really helps support me. But like, really, like, we work together and it's like, it's not just like you're on your own. Like, we work together to figure out how are we gonna do what's best for all of our kids.
That's great.
Thank you, Sophie.
Thank you very much.
Can you tell them the golden train? I shouldn't have brought it up without explaining what it is.
So, the golden train is whoever over two to three months period, whoever gets the most trains in our cafeteria for showing responsible behavior in the hallway, the two in expectations, they get the golden train.
Sophie's class. The coveted award.
Very nice.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
That was very good. Really good information. Much appreciated.
Really good information.
Excuse me. All right, so we are on to the 2122 audit report.
Oh, the exciting portion of the evening. All right, so this is our audit for the fiscal year 2122. There's really nothing in here that we haven't already reported out at the year-end 422, but it's just the official statement from the auditors as to where we stand and what financial position we have landed in. So, if you go to that first little chart, it says revenues, expenditures, surplus deficit. It gives you what our final budget was compared to where we actually landed and then the variance between the two. So, on that first line, where you have your revenues, you'll see there's about 1.8 million in excess revenues at the end of fiscal year 22. A few of the highlights that make up that difference is there was about 960,000 in increased tax collections due to our conservative assumed collection rate. We had some state and federal grants related to the COVID-19 pandemic for about just shy of $400,000. We had about $265,000 in conveyance and recording fees due to the housing boom in Simsbury when the pandemic happened, or as a result of the pandemic, I should say. $215,000 increase in the ECS grant. And then we had about $120,000 in unanticipated store revenue from a FEMA grant. So, then right below that, we had expenditures slightly over, or slightly under budget of about $17,591. And then this gets us to our overall surplus of $1,855,617. So, this is all done on a budgetary basis, which is how you all are used to seeing your financial statements when I prepare the quarterly. And then if you go down below where it says excess of revenues over expenditures, this is on a GAAP basis and this is what our credit agencies look at when they're reviewing our stability, our reserves, things of that nature. So, if you go down to the very last line of the first page where it has the unassigned general fund fund balance, you'll see that we're just shy over $19 million. And this is about 16, just shy of 16.7% of expenditures, which is in accordance with our policy.
Amy, what are the parameters on the policy? Is it a range?
It's 15 to 17%, I believe. Going on to the next page, I'll skip over the CNR unless you guys have any questions there, but it's pretty consistent with the prior year numbers. And then just going down to our management advisory letter, there's two comments that are left associated with the Board of Ed. So, the accounting procedures manual, this is something that is coming along as we complete our MUNUS conversion. Our deputy finance director is back from her leave and she's completing the payroll conversion side of the Board of Ed MUNUS conversion and in conjunction doing the accounting procedures manual as she goes. So, this should be completed by the end of fiscal year 24. And then the fraud risk assessment, this is something that is included in our CNR plan for fiscal year 24 budget process to have that completed in fiscal year 24 as well. Any questions?
So, those, those two notes have been around for a long time.
Yeah, a long time.
Right. So, so when you say, so like June of 2024, we'll have the manual, the accounting manual completed?
Yep.
All right.
We've been working on that for quite some time.
Yeah. Yes. I know MUNUS slowed us down. Just a little.
One question just about the budget process in general as we're heading to the public hearing and you talked about the assumed collection rate. Has that discussion come up in any of the workshops when you're with the Board of Finance on projected mil rate or are they planning on the standard?
They have not said, they have not given any indication that they'd be changing it.
So, there, it remains at 98.5, I believe, is what they said they wanted to do. If they had to play with it next year, they might.
Okay.
Right?
All right. Thanks, Ann.
All right. Any other questions for Amy? All right, well, with that, we are back to our second public audience.
Okay. Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Sharon, you go first. I was just, we have the public hearing next Tuesday.
Yes.
I would like to clarify what time and place because then we can...
6:00 PM, Simsbury Public Library, main program room.
No, it's in the terracotta room.
I have friends' program room cuz the terracotta room is smaller.
It's the bigger room.
The main room is...
It's in the terracotta.
It's in the public library and there'll be notes.
There'll be signs. It'll be on the children's library level.
Yeah.
So, go in there, you'll find them.
But we do wanna welcome everyone to come and we appreciate company. So, we're not the only ones sitting there.
Yes. Input is always welcome.
The other thing I was gonna bring up is, and that's what I was trying to log in, is where folks can see the...
Budget materials?
Yeah. Because I've looked out there just so if folks wanna look at it in advance, which they should probably do.
So, they can always view the presentations at Simsbury Community Media because all of those meetings have been recorded.
We've posted it on our website under the budget...
Under the budget tab.
Page tab under Board of Ed.
So, you go to the Board of Ed section of the public schools website and there is a budget tab and the presentations are there.
Okay, so, okay.
And the line item details there.
Okay.
Okay.
Because I didn't want, I've been saying minutes, but we wanna make sure.
No, you wanna look under the budget tab cuz there's historical documents there as well that give you context year over year. But, but you can always look. I find it best to listen sometimes and the presentations on Simsbury Community Media are valuable.
And I ask too because I know the finance team had tools for that, so.
Yep. Yes. Yes.
Okay. That's what I was gonna...
All right, so with that, hope to see you all next Tuesday at the library somewhere.
This is getting, this is getting to be...
Weekly meetings.
Like, then you get a...
Little shorter meetings, but they have fallen weekly. Yes, I understand.
And I like you guys.
I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Fall in favor. Less than an hour, people, just...